Call this meeting to order of the Planning Commission of Lethar Village for July 20th, 2021. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we'll move on to roll call.
Roll call, Chair Potowski.
Here from my home in Lethar Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Present attending from Lethar Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Secretary Stansberry.
Present, Lethar Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Dillard Rousseau.
Present in my home in Lethar Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Fabs. Board Member Hicks.
Here, I'm from my home in Lethar Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Board Member Cantor.
Present, Lethar Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. We will move on to next item, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to make an adjustment to the agenda. Like to move items seven B Comprehensive Plan Presentation Discussion and seven C Comprehensive Plan Resolution of Adoption to the end of agenda item seven, new business, after the current item seven E Recommendation to City Council Cannabis Marijuana Zoning Text Amendments.
Chair, if I may, just to clarify, Jason, did you want to also move the public hearing seven A for the comprehensive plan?
Oh, yes, that would need to be moved as well. Thank you.
Sorry, carry on.
So the recommendation had been, or the suggestion had been to move A, B, items A, B, and C to after items D and E and move them up on the agenda. So if there are no additional comments or recommendations, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that, with that suggested modification.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda with the modification to section seven.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Stansberry. Commissioner Potowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Cantor.
Hi.
Commissioner Hicks.
Hi.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard Rousseau.
Hi.
Motion carry.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the meeting minutes for the meeting of Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. If there are no questions, concerns, corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 15th as written.
Second.
Any of those in favor, roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Stansberry.
Hi.
Commissioners Potowski.
Hi.
Commissioner Cantor.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Hi.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Dillard Rousseau.
Hi.
Motion carry.
Okay, move on to the next item, public comment. If there are any comments from the public that we entertain at this time for items that are not on the agenda.
You have no hands raised at this point.
Okay, so we'll close that.
I'm sorry, what? There is one. Mr. Temorelli. Mr. Temorelli, you're able to talk.
We would ask that you just state your name and address and just for the record and go ahead with.
I submitted a, my name is Beau Temorelli, I live at 1-8485 Dolores. I submitted something earlier today at the office to be read into the minutes at this point. Will, do you have it handy and can you read it at this point?
Mr. Chair, we do have it handy. Would you like me to read it now?
Yes, please do so.
Thank you.
My name is Beau Temorelli. I participated in collecting the 440 petition signatures that have been submitted to the Lethar Village Clerk. The signatures were collected from 42 different streets in Lethar Village, LV. I estimate at least 80% of the 182 residents I spoke with signed the petition that asked to leave our zoning alone or put it on the ballot to allow all LV voters to decide if cannabis businesses should be allowed in LV. Our neighbor said, quote, "We love our bedroom community," quote, "We have enough traffic as it is." Quote, "I moved here because it felt safe and secure." Quote, "Where did this initiative come from?" We said we didn't want it months ago during the town halls and overwhelmingly, quote, "No selling of pot in LV." I found neighbors stunned to hear that these changes were so close to being approved. Some were confused by misinformation posted by a city council member on social media that said the citizens of LV had already approved the sale of marijuana. I spoke with one council member who was open to having the item put to a citizen vote and two others who thought that only they, the council, were entitled to vote on this as they had been elected by the citizens to make zoning changes. The majority of residents I spoke to, both for and against the changes, said that this is very, a very important decision, one that all voters should vote on, not just the council. Our petition should make clear based on a live random survey about 550 neighbors. Do not approve the zoning changes. Thank you, Beau Temorelli.
Thank you, Beau, for contributing to this, the process here and making your thoughts known. There are any other comments?
No other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we will close then this, finish the public comments section of the agenda and move on to the public hearing cannabis marijuana zoning ordinance text amendment.
So, Mr. Chair, I do have a present PowerPoint, short PowerPoint presentation that'll go over some of the background and some of the information that's contained in the proposed draft language. And I am happy to share that if you'd like before you open it up for public comment or questions.
Certainly, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Move this here. Can you, what do you see on your screen? I just moved it to my.
I see a narrow window of your home tools and let's see, what is it? Just your PDF screen with.
Okay, because I moved it. Hold on one second. Put it where I wanted and then do it again. There, better? Now you should see. First slide.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I wanted to get started just to provide some background information on what the planning commission is doing this evening. This is the public hearing for consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance that the planning commission has been working on for several months. The presentation that I'm going to share is much of it repeated information that we've been talking about over the last year and a half. We keep adding to it when we have new information to share or report on. So if you've been involved over the last year, some of this will be familiar. If this is your first time coming to a meeting, hopefully this will give you a little bit of the background about what we're talking about. The first thing that we like to share with the folks that are listening are that all the different terminology, words that we use for describing marijuana. You'll see it used as marijuana with an H, marijuana with a J, and you'll see cannabis. We feel that it is, along with a lot of other communities, should be using the preferred terminology, using the word cannabis because the term marijuana can be considered and have some negative connotations with it. So cannabis is just the scientific name of the plant, and so that's why we use that language. We do have several laws in the state that are updated rather frequently, and they've been in place for several years, starting first with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MMMA, that was in 2008, and that was the initiated act one of 2008. It was a ballot measure that was approved by Michigan voters. And then the two that followed, the second was Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, MMFLA, in 2016, and that provides for the regulation at the state level of medical marijuana facilities. And then the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MRTMA, of 2018. Again, another ballot measure approved by Michigan voters. So starting with the first piece of legislation in 2008, this allows qualifying patients to register with the state and caregivers as well. Qualifying patients can grow up to 12 plants for their personal use, and a registered caregiver can grow and sell limited amounts of cannabis for their qualifying patients. So a caregiver can serve up to five patients and grow for each of them, plus 12 plants for themselves, for a maximum of 72 plants. The state law establishes that caregivers and those growing operations are like any other permitted use, and that zoning may not entirely exclude that. The Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, 2016, expanded the types of medical cannabis activities that were permitted under state law. And so then we had new uses that included growers, processors, transporters, safety compliance facilities, and provisioning centers. Those are in place for medical marijuana. This is an image from an establishment in Wild Lake that was a licensed medical marijuana dispensary. This image is from the end of 2019. They did become a retailer as licensed by the city of Wild Lake in 2020. There were some updates per case law. There was a case that went to this Michigan Supreme Court in 2020. It's the Deruder case, Deruder versus the township of Byron. And that case is significant because it said that communities can designate specific areas in the community where registered caregivers may operate. And so we have seen in communities across the state caregiver uses occupying spaces in residential areas, residential homes, clearly not exclusively as a residential use with this on the side. In some cases, just really the use itself. So earlier this year, the city of Lethar Village adopted an amendment that would allow primary caregiver uses in the office district, which is primarily limited to the one geographic area along 12 mile road and not in residential areas. Then the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MRTMA, this permits the recreational use and possession of marijuana for people 21 and older and allowed those same facilities, the growers, the processors, transporter, safety compliance facilities, but also then retailers, micro businesses, which are the cultivation of less than 150 plants, some other different kinds of uses, temporary event or special event organizer, and social consumption clubs. One of the things that I should have said about the previous MMFLA communities were considered with this legislation to be opted out, therefore not permitting these types of facilities unless they took action to opt in. That changed with the MRTMA because this law requires communities to take action to prohibit one or more of the facilities. And so you were, we were already opted in. Just a little snapshot, I just did this today, just to give folks an idea. You can go on the state of Michigan website for the marijuana facility licensing website, and you can see all of the different types of facilities that are licensed by the state of Michigan all over, and then I did a little zoom in to kind of see, it's a little hard to read, but you'll see like the green ones are the provisioning centers. You can see some of the red ones, it would be some of the growers. But just to give you a sense of what is going on in the, in the nearby community and across the state. We should talk about tax revenues because that's something that comes up frequently when we're talking about the regulation or permission of marijuana facilities. Because we have the MRTMA, this is the recreational marijuana, there is an excise tax. So licensed marijuana retailers and micro businesses have an excise tax of 10% of the sales price in addition to the 6% sales tax. There was a 3% excise tax on the medical marijuana provisioning centers with the previous legislation, but that's repealed with the new legislation. So if there is an establishment that has both a medical and recreational license, they're only paying the excise tax on the recreational marijuana cannabis. There is some revenue sharing for the first two years, and I believe we're in the second year now. Some of the state revenue received goes to researching marijuana use in healthcare. And then the remainder of the breakdown goes to communities that allow the recreational businesses based on how many they allow. And then the same to the counties, and then some funds into K through 12 education and road funds. So the state with those three types of public acts that we have, the MMMA, the MMFLA, and the MRTMA, and I won't quiz you on those later because I put them on the side of the panel so that you can remember what each one of those is for. But it does allow for some regulation at the local level. So the city can address what is permitted. So the only one that is required is the primary caregiver, and that is permitted currently. But the city is able to choose whether to permit those other types of facilities, the, all the ones that we listed earlier, the growers, the micro business, processors, and the like. The city can also address how and where those facilities are permitted. So the city is able to establish reasonable local zoning regulations that apply to cannabis facilities. The state does have a locational standards in both MMFLA and the MRTMA, and that is to say that that's not within an area zone exclusively for residential use and not within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing public or private school unless the municipality adopts an ordinance that reduces its district requirement, which some have done. The recreational legislation says that a community can completely prohibit recreational cannabis establishments, but if it does decide to allow them, that the municipality can limit the number of them and then adopt ordinances that are not unreasonably impractical. That may be a little bit vague, and that's something that we, we think perhaps in the future we may see some challenges in other communities. But I think many are choosing to be very specific on the issues and concerns that such establishments might bring and try to tailor the regulations specifically to those. And then just a note that municipalities cannot restrict or prohibit the transportation of marijuana through the municipality. So what can we do at the local level? We can address parking or curbside pickup, drive-through, exterior and interior improvements, visibility, safety, utility concerns, waste management, and community benefits. Those tend to be the things that most folks raise as concerns and things that we have seen being regulated in other communities across the state. So why is the city exploring this zoning amendment? And we'll go back to the proposal and its passage in 2018, which again, as I said earlier, the law requires all Michigan communities to decide if they are going to allow or prohibit those recreational marijuana establishments. And so back then, pretty soon thereafter, in January of 2019, the city had an informational town hall meeting and then opted out of the MRTMA. But city council included a sunset on the opt-out because it was just, that sunset was specifically designed to encourage discussion on the issue. So keeping the door open to be educated on the subject. And so after that, a subcommittee that included a couple of the council members did some research on how other communities regulate cannabis facilities, what the benefits might be to the city, and then in August of 2020, recommended that the city allow a limited number of facilities. At that time, city council also extended the sunset on the opt-out through August of this year, allowing a full year to create ordinances that are appropriate to the city of Lethar Village. And that includes general code and zoning amendments. So while city council is working on their separate licensing ordinance that outlines what's permitted, which as directed would be retailers, provisioning centers, and safety compliance facilities only, the application and review process and the obligations of the license holders, and that would be two retail establishments and two safety compliance facilities. Then in a parallel track, the planning commission has been discussing the zoning considerations. So again, how and where could these be permitted? The planning commission's job is to create the language, review, discuss, hold the public hearing, which is what we're doing this evening. And then the planning commission is a recommending bodies. The planning commission does not, is not the legislative branch of the local government, and then we'll pass this on to city council where they will take final action. But I should note that the planning commission has been talking about this since last October. Well, really before that, they were aware that it was coming. We've had different training and educational opportunities on this previously, but really started working on the language itself, the general concept, the background considerations since last October at these meetings that we've identified here on the sheet. Also, an open house was held in May, end of May, to present the general information to the community and the draft ordinance language to the public. And then the planning commission discussed the comments and made a couple of small changes after that time. It also was posted, all the information posted on the city's website, and I point this out because I think this is a very great resource that the community has. There is information in here about the history leading up to this, the findings of the subcommittee, and the progress in the study that's been in place over the last year. So getting to the heart of the matter, what does the proposed zoning ordinance amendment allow? We have to define in our ordinance, you'll see a lot of definitions. We want to make sure that the definitions that we have, so what is a retailer? What is a provisioning center? What is a safety compliance facility? Those definitions are included, and they are consistent with state law. They would allow those three types of facilities, which really two of them are the same. The retailer and the provisioning center are essentially the same thing. They're just licensed differently at the state, so they're listed differently in the ordinance. Those would be special land uses in the commercial vehicular and the mixed-use district. They would not be permitted in the village center district. And as a point of information about a special land use, to remind you, the planning commissioners and for the public, a special land use is a use that the city has, feels is appropriate in those districts, but may have special considerations within specific areas of the community that are zoned that way. And so a special land use has an additional level of approval in the city where a public hearing is held and people are notified, and also city council takes final action on those. So there is an extra level of review there. Again, the city license would be required, and that's a separate code amendment that I said was running parallel. The city council will be talking about that again on Monday. It does require, the zoning ordinance amendment requires a separation of 1,000 feet from schools, childcare facilities, publicly owned parks, playgrounds, and licensed substance abuse programs, and allows the planning commission to reduce the distance to 500 feet for temporary emergency shelters. Other standards that are associated with the zoning ordinance amendment, it prohibits consumption on site. It prohibits residential uses in the same structure, prohibits outdoor storage, it prohibits facilities with noise, dust, vibration, glare, fumes, or this was something that the planning commissioners discussed, odors detectable to normal senses beyond the boundaries of the property in which the facility is operated. Very important. Requires controls for air contamination, requires waste to be securely stored and disposed of properly, and requires that facilities are managed for air, air handling, waste, and proper heating and cooling. Also for retailers and provisioning centers, planning commission discussed that the appearance of these facilities should be very similar to other retailers. The idea is that this is a retail space, just like any other. As we try to reinvigorate the Southfield Road corridor with other retailers, we want something that is also high quality and generates activity so that people feel safe and comfortable here. No drive-throughs, limiting the display within 20 feet of the windows. We're not going to have big displays right up in the front, but they can be in the back. And then safety compliance facilities have that secure lab and storage space as well. So again, the next step would be the planning commission would discuss this and then make a recommendation to city council. Planning commission can recommend that council approve the amendments, deny them, or approve them with minor changes. And then city council will consider this amendment and the license ordinance, as well as the planning commission's recommendation at their upcoming meeting on Monday, July 26. That is the extent of the presentation. I won't stop that. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like to move on to the public, we can do the questions after.
Jill, I think it's worth reiterating because just in discussions I've had with people over the last week, and I actually saw a comment go by in the chat that also was indicative of this, that there is a little bit of confusion between what council will be doing or will be acting on on July 26th, and what we're acting on here as a body. With, to paint it with a really broad, wide brush, council on the 26th will be deciding on whether or not we allow provisioning in retail centers. What we're doing here is setting up the regulations and what it would look like. What are the regulations? What would these organizations or these retailers have to do in order to be in business should council approve that on the 26th? I think there was, I think there's definitely been some confusion in the community about what meeting, what's happening at what meeting? So this is, this is, this meeting is specifically for the zoning regulations surrounding these kinds of businesses, should they be approved on the 26th?
I think that's a good point and definitely worth repeating. If the council decided to go ahead and approve that without zoning language available and in place, then they would go anywhere. So this does put those standards in place for that.
Yeah, and I guess a question for you, Leanne. So there is a potential petition that was turned in for in favor, or to, to put in front of the voters to approve marijuana. I think it was medical marijuana, actually, more specifically. So what, just out of curiosity, if that goes through, and let's say it goes to the voters, and the voters pass it, but they would, whatever they don't specify specifically in that ordinance would be covered under the zoning regulation that we would approve tonight? Is that correct?
Well, that, the petition that was received is, as you stated, just for medical. But it does contain a different number. There's a number of different things than, you know. There's a number of different things than, you know, what is being proposed to be approved. So if that, with a very broad stroke, then not saying whether that petition is, is going to go anywhere, you know, or is it appropriate at this stage, you know, whether it would get, but if it were to, what you're asking, then these, these, if this were to be adopted, yes, these regulations would apply. Although the petition that was presented did, I'm not sure. I don't have it right in front of me. But if, if it had some contradictory provisions in there as well, and if that's the case, then, you know, there, that, that is going for a charter amendment, which is different than just, just a, an ordinance. And typically the charter would be, would control over that. But again, that's kind of getting ahead of ourselves here because I, I don't know if, you know, at this point, if the, the city were to approve these uses already, then you could say that that petition is, is moved in a point too. So if the, if the city takes legislative action to allow these facilities prior to that, to that petition being approved and going forward, there's, there's no, so that, that will require further legal research at this point. So I don't want to speak out of turn completely, but just to give you a general idea, you know, that may not even be appropriately, appropriate to go forward. Because we've already approved that the legislative body has taken action. And so there is no need for this petition to have you take action.
Right, but I guess, I guess what I was getting at was just pointing out the importance of the, of the zoning regulations to have them in place, regardless of what happens on the 26th.
Correct.
Because that was what I was really getting at.
Yes, yes, Mr. Candor. So, so any, or, you know, anything that wouldn't be in conflict. If you're just, again, in the broad overview, yes, this could help to control and, and dictate what would happen under that petition.
Right.
If it were approved.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. Thank you.
And I noticed that there are some questions and some comments being posted in the chat. And what I would recommend, Mr. Chair, is that when you open the public hearing, we can add those comments and questions together and then we can try to answer them all at the end.
Okay, and that makes sense. I, I have a question as well. I heard a statement made from both Bruce and from Leanne about the, the petition that was put forward as far as it only referring to medical. And, and, and I had understood that it was referring to both medical and recreational.
No.
That are going on right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm only aware of that, of the one that was presented in favor of just medical. So I apologize if I am not up to.
And I just raised that because I anticipate, I, I don't know from the community, people who have signed one, signed both, or that there were even two until I'm hearing it now. So just, just to try to clear away any confusion that might come out of that or additional dialogue that, maybe there's still the additional dialogue related to that subject, so. If we don't have any other questions. Now, as far as managing questions, Jill, versus questions and the ability to, to comment, generally the, the comment period is, is really to have people speak their position, have their say of what they want to say without it necessarily turning into a back-and-forth question and answer session. How shall we best manage that?
Well, I think what we'll do is, I think between Leanne and myself, Eric Peach is with me also from Giffords Webster. So I think that we'll be taking notes while people make their comments. And some of them are just going to be comments. If they have questions, we'll just make note of that. And so when you ask a question, we won't answer you right away, but we'll answer it at the end. People may have the same questions as well. So it just tends to get everything out and then we can move on from there.
Right. And, and we know through the past weeks, anyway, there's been feedback that's been provided from different citizens. Things have been written and collected by the city. I, I think at this point, we'll start with the, with the people who would like to have, have their say, express themselves regarding the issue. And we will then open the, the, the public hearing to comments from the community.
If I could, Mr. Chair, maybe I would suggest, and Leanne, maybe you have some advice on this too. I think if there's questions or comments related to the petition, we won't really be able to answer those. I, so I think I would maybe encourage.
Correct. What, what, what this is here for and legally noticed, and this is what's been reviewed extensively, you know, by the planning commission, is this zoning ordinance. So the, the public hearings should be limited to that. Yes, the petitions, you know, present some other outside issues that are somewhat related, but not really to the specific zoning issues that we're focusing on. Because as you stated before, this is not whether or not the city is going to allow it. This is whether, if it were to be allowed, these are what the regulations will be.
Before we then open the, the, the public hearing for comment, I, I've got one more statement, and that's with regard to the status of what happens this evening and possible relevance to the effectiveness of a petition, should it meet its requirements? And that would be if the recommendation came from this commission to, to approve the zoning ordinance as it's proposed. For purposes of the acceptance of, this is what we would recommend if this were going to be approved in the community. And that enabled the city council to act on this prior to the acting on that petition. That's of concern to the community, I'm sure.
I guess I'm not totally understanding your.
My, my point being that if the recommendation to approve this goes through to city council and city council acts on this before the petition could reach its objective and is made moot, that it's a point of importance to the community. Or might be a point of importance to the community. I, I would suspect it is. So. With that, I guess we can open the, the public hearing and start entertaining speakers at this time.
Please. Real quick, the, should be noted that there, usually we impose a three-minute time limit?
Yes, I was just getting three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And we'll be monitoring the time as we anticipate there'll be a, a potentially a lot of people who would like to express themselves on this issue.
And also a reminder to, to be heard, make, you'll need to raise your hands. You'll need to click on the button to raise your hand so that the moderator knows that you want to make comments.
And Calda, will you be helping us with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Zitron, you, do you have to open the public hearing first? Or is it open now? We can take questions?
I think, I think, I, I think I, I gotta request to unmute. So somebody nod if they can hear me.
We can hear you.
Yeah. I, I just want to say that there was a conversation just now about whether the petition cover was medical only or there were two petitions and so on. What I posted and I looked back in my email thread and I copied and pasted into the chat the petition as, as I received it in an email, as an email attachment. And while it explicitly mentions medical marijuana, it also uses the words retail outlets. And I think that my guess is that that will encompass places that sell for recreational use. And, you know, so I was just trying to fill in with that. I really don't have any, any other questions. I was at the, at the meeting at Panera where this was discussed. So I understand what, what's going on here. That's it?
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
We hear you.
Hello.
Hi. I posted this question in the chat, I guess I just, so you can ignore that because I'm going to ask it now. I would like to hear from every panelist, if possible, if the panelists are in favor of the dispensary approval going to the ballot and the voters and the Lathir Village residents. Because obviously, as Mark said, it appears to be a pretty important topic for Lathir Village residents. I would also like to know why or why not you would be in favor of the residents voting on this? Thank you.
Sounds like we're being pulled. How do you want to handle this, Mr. Chair?
Well, I guess the question is whether it's appropriate to answer or provide those responses at this time in light of the fact that we have not ruled on the ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I don't really think that that is appropriate to be asking the planning commissioners' personal opinions on the business itself. It's more of your opinions on what, whether these regulations are appropriate if the business were to be approved. So it's not your place to be the decision makers on approving these, you know, whether, whether or not you're going to approve it. It's basically just going under the assumption that if it were to be approved, what are the best regulations that you can come up with to, to be the best for, for the, for the city in the case of, of having these businesses? So I would advise you that it's not an appropriate question for you to answer.
Yeah, but just to be clear, I think Caitlin is asking for the planning commissioners' opinions about whether this should be put to a vote, whether the presence of retail medical marijuana facilities should be put to a vote by voters in the city, not whether we individually support or don't support the presence of those facilities in the city. I think your answer is the same, though, in terms of whether we should respond or not to our opinion about whether this should be put to a vote. But I don't want, it's, I think, Leanne, your interpretation of what Caitlin was saying was our personal opinion about whether they should exist or not, as opposed to whether or not it should be voted on or not. And I have a personal opinion on both those things. And I agree that this is not the right forum or the right time, given the state of this process, for the individual planning commissioners to be making public statements on that.
Yes, have you, as you have correctly stated, and thank you for clarifying, that, yeah, it would not be appropriate either, in either question situation.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, and at this time, I would ask that you have people say their name and address, please.
Yes, that's a reminder, please. We, we ask that for the record, we need you to state your name and address for the record, before your three minutes of time.
Okay, I guess I'm Mary Lou Resnick. I live in San Jose. And I just wanted to say that I believe the ordinance should be in effect or created before we elect to have a business here. I think that would prevent us from lawsuits, if I'm not mistaken. And I wholly approve of it because if there is establishments already in Lathir, I guess homes, I'm referring to one near my home that is already a grow house. I would like to have some kind of regulation on that. And the ordinances being created first might address the fact or the houses that are allegedly grow houses in Lathir. I don't know if that's clear or not, but that's all I have to say. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I think we need Mary Lou to.
Yeah, to provide her address.
Oh, 18880 San Jose. I'm on the corner of San Jose and Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Can I see?
Okay, good afternoon. Elsie Babcock, yes, Mark. Elsie Babcock, 27661 Lathir Boulevard, Lathir. Well, you know, okay, so, right. I don't live here. I'm just kidding. But anyway, Leanne, you mentioned earlier that the petition would be mute. And I'm trying to listen to you intently. Not sure if I really caught why you said that and what it pertains to. Could you clarify that?
Yes, I probably spoke out of turn as far as we really, you know, it's not a point of, of discussion for this planning commission public hearing on, on the zoning ordinance. But what I was just referring to is that it depends on what the city council ends up doing, you know, which again, is not a subject for, for this, for this meeting, this public hearing, as far as, as whether they go ahead and decide to allow, allow the marijuana facilities of some sort. And then if that's the case, what, what is in the petition requesting that? You know, i- if that were the case, then it wouldn't really, the, the council's already approving something that this petition is referring to. So that's all I was getting at, at that point. But again, I, I, as I said, I probably was, you know, speaking out of turn. I don't want to get too in-depth into that because it's really not a subject for the, the, the subject of the meeting that we're conducting right now, the public hearing. It's just again about the zoning ordinance and what, what regulations should be in place if such facilities are approved.
Okay, I asked Saleem about this. And I don't know if this is a cart before the horse. When I asked him if, if the voters should vote, you know, what, let's say they didn't approve, okay, and which I don't. But, and then we have this ordinance in place. What happens to the ordinance, actually? Does it supersede the vote? Does it just go away?
Well, that's why, again, I, you know, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit because there's two different kinds of, of, you know, petitions. One would be an initiative petition asking for an ordinance to allow something. And then another one is what's called a referendum, a referendary petition, which would be asking to repeal something that's already been approved. So there's two different types of things that could come into play. But we really don't, you know, it's again, the heart, the cart before the horse because we don't have any idea at this stage of what, you know, nothing has been officially approved. So that's where we're at. So it's really not anything that, at this point, I, I wouldn't want to say anything further because I don't want to give misinformation about, you know, what would happen, what wouldn't, because nothing's even been approved yet. So this is really just, to clarify, maybe some of the questions I feel like people are having is of like, why are we doing this zoning right now amendment when it, the uses haven't even been approved? You know, and it's, it's because the, we need to have these regulations in place if the approval is to come, so that immediately upon approval, under state law, if you approve it and don't have regulations in place, then anything, anything goes as far as, you know, locations and et cetera. So this is just allowing the city to have protection in place, so to speak, or to, to have their regulations in place immediately if they were to approve such uses. So that's why, because it, it also requires the extra step of, with the zoning amendments of going through the planning commission, which takes, is a longer process. So it isn't something. So it isn't something that they could just do simultaneously, which they are in the end. It will be more of a simultaneous thing. If, if council were to approve the uses, then they already have in their hand the regulations that have been thoroughly vetted by the planning commission. So that's why, if that makes sense, that's why we're doing it like this, where it seems like, well, why are you doing zoning when you haven't even approved the use? Well, that's why it's kind of a special case here because of that state law where anything goes if you don't have something in place.
Right, that was kind of the genesis of my earlier question, Leanne, you know. You know, so correct me if I'm wrong, but let me just throw out an example. Let's say that, that initiative, you know, let me not even say that initiative. Let's say initiative were to, were to be put on the ballot and it passed, and we didn't have zoning regulations in place. So for example, there would be no odor control regulation. You know, like we, we had, you know, I think Jill said earlier, you know, we odor control in the, in the ordinance, zoning ordinance says it can't be smelled off of the property. Well, that wouldn't be in place. And all these other things wouldn't be in place as well. So they're two separate, separate things. But like you said, Leanne, it's kind of a weird situation where you want to have the regulations in place. You know, so it isn't a Wild West kind of thing.
And I wasn't going to say anything because it's the public hearing and I still want the folks that are attending to participate, but I did want to follow up on what you were saying. And that is to say that the planning commission, again, is not taking, planning commission cannot do anything to change the ordinances right now. The planning commission was asked by council to prepare this language so that council could make its decision. So this is really, there's no immediate effect or any effect of any recommendation that the planning commission puts forward this evening.
Yes, it does make a question to me. So if the planning commission does recommend city council approved zoning ordinances for these facilities, based on the draft that we have in front of us today. And then, just theoretically, the city council chooses to deny those facilities being in the city, just flat out, doesn't even put it to a vote, just says we're not going to allow medical or recreational marijuana facilities in the city. And they update the city charter to indicate that. There's no damage of having the planning, the zoning ordinances in place. They're just regulating something that can't exist in the city. Is that true?
The zoning ordinance does require that the facility be licensed.
Right, so it can't be.
If there is no license, then it's not a permitted use. I mean, it would be, we would amend the ordinance to remove it, but it wouldn't hurt that it's there until we do remove it.
Right. Thank you.
I was thinking Jason's point there was that if the, if the recommendation goes through to approve the amendment as written and city council elects not to follow it, what happens to that? It, it just never gets approved, so it never becomes an actual, an actual zoning. Beyond a recommendation, this is how we would regulate, this is how we would control those facilities. If we, if the city council voted to do so, you know, if they vote no not to do so, then that just goes away and it never becomes part of our zoning ordinance. I think just to kind of clarify, I think what Jason initially started.
Right. On the zoning language and the licensing language is with council.
So let's, let's move on. I see, I think we have another hand up.
It looks like it's the same speaker that spoke already. So I might suggest if there's someone else that wants to speak before we go to seconds.
I agree. Okay. Looks like we have another hand up. Nick, are you unmuted? Looks like he was for a minute, then not, and then again.
Mr., oh, there you go.
You know.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you now. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Thanks, Chris Ayala, 32411 Mount War, Mount Road, Warren, Michigan. Three quick questions. So there's nothing adopted as an ordinance at this time in the city. Am I correct or am I wrong?
I believe that's a correct statement.
Okay. Second, there was a zoning map that's been published. And is that up tonight in the planning commission for modifications, additions or deletions to that proposed planning commission? I mean, to that plan, the zoning map?
Any, any modifications that are there? There's, there's, I would, would nothing specifically, we're not changing any zoning to any properties as part of that?
So my question is, the city published a zoning map that set forth alleged green zones, you know, where the city thought this type of use would be appropriate. And that is not being changed tonight. Am I correct?
The map, I said I was going to answer, we answer questions at the end. So maybe we should just keep going. We'll, we'll answer that one at the end.
Okay, so, you know, Jill, just take note of that and we can provide an official answer on that one.
Can I ask one more and preserve it for the end, too?
If you're within your three minutes, certainly.
Thank you, sorry. Um, we were talking about petitions within the city. Has the city been presented with one, two, three petitions or none at all? A ref, not referendums, but initiatory petitions?
I, I can't speak to, to that, what's been received at this point, as not being the receiver directly of that. Cheryl, I see your face. Are you aware, or have you, have, have you been in receipt of these? Or have they gone through Susie or?
I think we can respond to those questions at the end.
Okay.
All right.
We'll take note of that. Thank you. See another hand up. Marvin?
Yes, this is Martha Moore. We're at 28050 Red River Drive. And my question is this, I'm, I'm concerned about several things. First of all, I'm concerned about transparency. I'm also concerned about the need to rush this procedure. I mean, someone posted in the chat, we need to do this as soon as possible. Why do we need to do this as soon as possible? I mean, as we could see from the map, there are lots of places where people can go and get marijuana today. There is no rush to get it into our community that could potentially change our community. So, so my question is, why is there a rush to do this? It, it does seem to me that this is putting the cart before the horse. And as I posted in the chat, I mean, so even if it is approved, and I'm going to be honest, I'm not in favor of it. And I will campaign hard. But I'm not in favor of it. But even if it is approved, couldn't we have a, a delay start date? It seems to me that we're spending a lot of time and effort, even this meeting tonight, to put in place a zoning, some zoning rules that may never come to fruition, that may turn out to be an exercise in fertility. It does seem like we're putting the cart before the horse, and I don't understand the rush.
Thank you for those comments. And we can add that to the list of comments for response at the end. See one more hand up. Is that? See a tally of a lot of questions in the question and answer session. If there is no one else.
Look like there was still someone.
Someone?
Zitron.
Yeah, Ian Zitron, 28265 Sunset Boulevard, West. I was at the, the informational meeting at Panera. So a question has come up, and in fact, the immediately previous speaker asked why I was rushing so much. My understanding from Dawn Medley, who was on the marijuana consultation committee, is that the need for these ordinances is to insulate Lathrop Village from potential suit. I think she used Pontiac as an example of a community that did not have zoning regulations in place before approving such sites. And that opened them to suit. I don't understand quite how that works. But she apparently had, you know, dived very deeply into the, the, these issues. And that's her understanding. So we are, I don't think we are rushing to put these zoning ordinance into place. I think the zoning ordinances need to be in place. And if marijuana dispensaries or retail outlets fall, then the zoning issues become moot. But this needs to be done now and it needs to be, this needs to be, be in place so that things go forward without somebody coming and suing us. That's it.
Thank you, Ian. Cam? Any other hands to be raised? I don't see any currently.
And so I'm going to look through the chat to see if there are questions. There's many comments about the petition, but we won't discuss that because that's not relevant to what we're talking about here with the zoning ordinance. We've already indicated we can't answer those questions. But I wanted to at least mention that I see them. I think we got some of this. There seemed to be some chat. I'm not exactly sure if it's a question, but I think it's worth just saying it out loud. Conversations, discussions between the planning commission, which is this body, and city council. And I think there is an insinuation that there are some decisions that have already been made pertaining to specific businesses. And that is not the case. All of the meetings of the planning commission and city council in which this item has been discussed have been open to the public. And there have been many. And I outlined the ones that the planning commission has had, city council has had, I think, updates at every meeting, if I'm not mistaken, for the last over a year.
Year, at least.
Yeah, Jill, and to add to that, when we've been contacted by vendors, we, you know, have not been talking to them. So.
Right. One of the questions was whether the start date could be after the zoning regulations are in place. And that is really the intent of why the planning commission has been discussing this language so that the city council, before they make their final determination on the licensing requirements, or I mean, the licensing ordinance itself, and whether this moves forward, city council will have at their, as part of their resources, an understanding of how and where the city may regulate these uses, especially pertaining to the ways that I, I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, where, where we can regulate them and how we can regulate them and what standards we impose. Having that information allows city council to have a greater understanding of the implications. So they will understand, yes or no, we will or will not allow these facilities, but understanding all the ways in which they can be regulated. So I think that is extremely useful and I think it's a very logical approach to doing that. There was a question about the recommendation and what the data, the information was based on. As I indicated earlier, there is the city's website that has an entire page dedicated to this topic. It's been up for several months. And I believe that information is included on the website. So those were the chats, the questions.
Jill, as I just was reading one of the questions in the chat, and I just was going to step in and answer it, to my knowledge, with the recommendation for two dispensaries who recommended. I believe that that recommendation came from the committee who did the, the evaluation, the study that was put in place by the, by the city council. And that was the number that came to us when the formulation of the zoning ordinance was first being drafted. I can't honestly say why, to answering the question of why two dispensaries. I would, as in estimation, say competition. But I was not part of the committee, so I don't know how that decision came to. When it came to the planning commission, that did not seem unreasonable as far as, you know, if, if we were going to regulate and approve, or not approve. But if the city ultimately opted to approve, that didn't seem out of, out of place to the planning commission.
It's like there is one more request, one more hand up.
Okay. Angelica, say.
Actually, this is Angelica's husband, Tate.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, please give us your full name and your address and we'll speak for the record.
Okay, for the record, my full name is Tate McBroom. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife, Angelica. Our address is 26415 Meadowbrook Way. I just wanted to chime in, basically after listening to the proceedings and make mention that I've had people stop by in what seems to be almost a political canvassing of attempting to get signatures to be against this in the last week or so. And I, I respect and appreciate everyone's concerns. I think that things progress a certain way in the culture of what's going to be happening in businesses and the way things are taxed. Going forward, I understand the trepidation that certain people have. But this is a fact of life that I believe is just going to continue to evolve. And marijuana industries that are legalized are going to be here to stay. Truthfully, I'm a little more concerned about that gas station that's going up in the old Verizon building. And I don't know when that got approved or if it got approved, or if that's still in the, the process. But to me, the transient nature of gas stations, especially those that are issued liquor licenses, is that much more of a danger to our community than something of this nature. So I just wanted to state that for the fact. And I appreciate everybody's willingness to be involved. So I just wanted to state that for the fact, and I appreciate everybody's willingness to be involved and to make their opinions known. But from where we stand, this is something that's going to come anyway. And this is going to be a business that's going to be here at some point in the future. And anything that can add tax revenue to the city that's done correctly, legally, professionally, is not a danger to our community. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would you, do you want the public comment to be read in to the record?
Are we speaking to all the comments that have come forth before, that have been have been put forth? Or are we speaking to the ones that are being written this evening? Maybe during this proceedings?
The ones in this proceeding.
Yes, please do.
There were forms that were received, the public comment forms.
And Mark, I sent those, or Chair, sorry. I sent those in an updated memo to you all shortly before the meeting and made made notations within there. Did you all receive that document?
Yes.
You did? Okay, good. It was like 30 seconds before my power went out.
Say I didn't have the document open, so.
Those were, there are that that memo was updated from what was provided to you on Friday in your packets, and I will certainly update that once I get power back. But there were additional comments that I received throughout the weekend, throughout the weekend and today related to cannabis. So and those are notated on the last few pages.
And Susie, they will be included in the minutes of the meeting as well, correct?
Yes.
Hi, this is Scott Baker. Sorry, I'm calling in remotely. But yeah, with respect to public comments, given the volume of public comments that have been received, I would recommend that they be put into the minutes and in the interest of time, not read during the public comment section. So again, I apologize for being late to the meeting. I had a conflict this evening.
Right, and I was trying to, Scott, assess just how much that might be, because in that latest document, I'm I'm either got the wrong link or having my own technical difficulties. So I don't disagree with that, as long as we have those recorded as part of the public record. So if there are no further comments, you can look at closing the public hearing portion of the meeting and pursue with the recommendation to city council on the cannabis marijuana zoning text amendments. So at this time, we've had the discussion, we've had input from the public. We know the intent here was to basically come to terms with the final verbiage of the ordinance should the city decide or opt to approve these facilities within the community. And so based on the language that is in or that that comprises the the zoning ordinance as it's written, or the proposed zoning ordinance, it's for the planning commission to make a recommendation to the city council, whether that language is sufficient to protect the interests of Lathrow Village if they were to decide to allow these facilities within the community. So that said, we're looking for.
Real quick, before we get to motions, we did say that there were some questions that we were going to table. Are we?
There are, there are a few in the question box. The first one was whether someone asked if it was true that cannabis purchases are cash only. Currently, it is largely a cash-based business. But that does is changing, and there are other options coming and evolving. So I would say that, you know, potentially now, but that probably won't always be the case. Mr. Ilo already asked the question. We talked about the zoning plan. That was an informational map that showed the areas covered in those two districts that I mentioned at the beginning, the commercial vehicular and mixed-use district, with the exclusion of the facilities that we had identified at the time. That the ordinance language itself, though, is what regulates where these facilities would be located. And not that, I mean, the map is, again, for informational purposes, the zoning map is the zoning map, and that's not changing. There's some other questions. When someone asks a question, what reputation does a marijuana business carry? I don't know that that's necessarily a question for us, rather maybe more of a rhetorical question. So we'll just note that it's there. Several questions about the petition, again, that we won't be able to answer. The marijuana study group, who was that? And I know that there were two members from council, and then there were other, three other members or four other members, Bruce?
Four other members. So Carl Woodson, Cora Morgan. Give me a second, I'll think of it.
There were some questions about lawsuits. There is always that potential. I don't I don't think that there's anything specific that the city of Lathrow Village is responding to or necessarily afraid of. I think just being aware that the industry is pushing, is pushing for these facilities in communities across the state. I think one thing that it is worth noting is that there are communities who have opted out and have had petitions circulated to allow and create ordinances via a ballot, just like the two state ballot initiatives were approved that gave us the regulations that we have at the state level. There are local petitions that have been circulated and have passed in communities. And when that happens, the community is really left struggling with ordinances that they didn't write. And in some cases, and in the case of a charter amendment, they cannot change. So I think there is also an awareness that it is good to be ahead of this and shape and direct the nature of this business, the way it works for the city.
Before you go on to the next question, Don Ikenstot was, that's one of Dawn Medley. Those were the other ones. Sorry, little brain blip there.
Thanks.
The two council members were.
Saleem Siddiqui was the chair of the committee, and Ian Ferguson was an advisor to the committee, was an unvoting member.
Thanks.
I, there was a question about the case name and court file number of the Pontiac lawsuit. We don't have that information. Are, will armed guards be necessary? It's our hope that that's not the case. We do have ordinance language in the zoning ordinance that the materials be kept secure, that waste is kept securely. But we don't have any requirements for armed guards in the ordinance. And then the last question is a good one that we can't answer. How much tax revenue will be generated for Lathrow Village? It is impossible to know the answer to that question. There are application fees and license fees that are associated with the establishments. But it is not to be considered revenue. It is really for administration and enforcement associated with those businesses. And any revenue that's generated, as I indicated earlier, with that breakdown of revenue at the state level that gets distributed. So it's hard to know what that might be.
It depends on the number of communities that opt in and the number of total facilities that get approved by those, by those communities, like all those things add up to how much excise tax can actually be collected.
I believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I believe last year it was $28,000 per.
It was 20, yeah, 26 or $28,000 per facility.
Yeah.
Retail facility. And so it's anybody's guess what that number is this year. It depends on sales, but it also depends on the number of establishments, the number of communities. So it's hard to know.
Okay, I think we've reached the
All of those.
End of our questions here.
It's like.
Oh, one more.
There's a question about the makeup of the study group. And this was a council study group. There's a question in the chat about how many facilities are in an eight and 12-mile radius and then surrounding cities? And unfortunately, we don't have the answer to that question. I think that we got them all.
Okay. So the question remains before, do we have a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance as it's written for consideration by the city council? Are there any recommendations for modifications to the ordinance as it's proposed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend it to council as written.
Recommend for approval, Les?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, those in favor, roll call.
Kelda, you're on mute if you're talking.
I'm sorry. Commission, Diller Russo.
Aye.
Commissioner Hammond.
Aye.
Commissioner Hicks.
Aye.
Commissioner Cantor.
Aye.
Here, Pachowski.
Aye.
And Secretary Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, move on to.
Chair, just to clarify for the community that's participating tonight, we've said it before, but I just want to make sure that it's clear. This did not change, have the effect of changing the zoning ordinance. This was a recommendation by the planning commission, and this item will go to council for their review and consideration and action. They will be discussing it on Monday. Twenty-six.
Hey, thank you, Jill, for that summary. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the public hearing for the comprehensive plan.
Me close the things that I have open here so that I can write things up. Little technical difficulty here. Okay. I thought instead of doing a big presentation on the comp plan that I would simply review with you the memo that I put into your packets. You can probably zoom in, so you can actually read that. There we go. So as the planning commission may be aware, we have some new planning commissioners that joined us after the start of this process. But we've been working on the comprehensive plan for over a year now, probably almost a year and a half, really. We started the process with, well, I should back up. So communities across the state of Michigan are required to review their master plans for land use every five years. For those in the community that are still with us, we're pleased that you're still with us to hear about the master plan, which is really the community's long-term vision for growth and development in the community over a 10- to 15-year window. The state does require that the community review its master plan every five years, just to make sure that it's current. And many communities choose to do an update at that time as well. So what we've done over the past year or so, we've collected data, we've looked at maps, we've looked at a downtown assessment to look at conditions along the Southfield Road corridor. We've looked at some parking and traffic assessments, and we've updated the 2014 market analysis. We reviewed the goals and objectives with the planning commission and updated them slightly based on the planning commission's input. We did have some public and community input. We had a public meeting in August of 2019. We did community and business surveys. We did a virtual open house due to COVID. We had to modify a little bit of that process that we went through for that. We also took a look at the land use plan, the land use map. We can go over that in a minute. And then updated the zoning plan and the action strategies. Some of those were from the 2015 master plan. And there are some additional strategies included in this version. So we have, to this point, we have had the review period. So the last time that you saw this, I believe, was April. And at that time, pursuant to state law, we sent the draft master plan or comprehensive plan out to the reviewing agencies as required through state law, which is Oakland County, as well as City of Southfield. We received comments, which essentially, I think, from the city of Southfield, and Susie, correct me if I'm wrong, the standard language is that they find that that the city of Lathrow Village's plan is not inconsistent with their plan. So it's not exactly an endorsement of the document. But it is worth noting that that's what they're reviewing for. They're looking for the boundaries on the borders of the city of Lathrow Village. Are they consistent with what's happening in the adjacent community, which in our case is the city of Southfield? We have updated the map since the last time you saw it, back in April. And we also added in a few things based on the suggestions from Oakland County Planning Division, information about the Rouge River watershed, which I thought was a good comment, and added additional information about brownfield redevelopment, and provided the additional county resources in the appendix. So the next step is, as we are doing now, having the public hearing on the document and then city, excuse me, planning commission action to adopt the master plan. And then city council may do so as well. And then I think it would be a good thing for us to do, following this meeting, is begin looking at those implementation items and prioritizing some things that we want to address this year, and then moving into 2022. That's the overview. Flip over to the map real quick. Document has been available on the city's website. And I think we'll do open this back up here. So we have, we rewrote the goals and objectives in a different format. They're essentially this, they're very, very similar to what they were in 2015. But we framed them in a little bit different way. So we really wanted to think about it again with the end in mind. So what do we want? And so we wrote that. What do we want? Why do we want it? Where? And then what obstacles or related considerations do we need to keep in mind? And and what are the things that we might want to be thinking about when we think? When we think about what kind of action strategies we're going to do moving forward? So we did that for the five categories of community character, housing, commercial and industrial development, public services and facilities and transportation. And so looking at those again, they're they're very consistent with what they were in 2015, it's just a little bit of a different format. Future land use map, the only thing that we changed here, which isn't really a change, but we noted that the the House in the Woods property, when I see we didn't do it here. But we did note that this area here is zone for the cluster housing and that is something that's currently in place. We just recognized it here in the text and we'll talk a little bit about why we did that later. But we do look at the the categories of land use, so again, most of the community is single-family residential, as you know, with some corridor, commercial development, non-residential development. And I think with this plan, we recognize even more of a need to expand and be more flexible with certain uses, like residential uses to make sure that we are affording our property owners the options for redevelopment to really encourage reinvestment in this corridor. We included here in this plan, what we, something we didn't have last time, which was a section, chapter on resiliency and sustainability. And so thinking about ensuring that not only do we have the needs addressed for our residents today, but also that we're planning ahead and thinking about the needs of residents in the future. And in addition to that, and somewhat similar, but but a little bit different, thinking about resiliency, so how do we? How do we address some of the persistent stressors in our community? Things like, obviously, this isn't the city of Lathir Village in this picture, but it's representative of flooding that we've all seen over the last several weeks. How do we deal with that? How do we ensure that we are, we have the proper strategies in place to handle excessive heat days? Or excessive cold days? We see those things rising in frequency. And then also, how do we plan for other stressors and shocks that we may not anticipate, like a pandemic? How do we deal with changes to the economy? So really thinking about, for example, this map is is a little bit hard to to gather information about because the city is geographically small, but thinking about, I think it's it's here because it helps us remember to think about the percent of our population that's over age sixty five. And how certain stressors may impact them in a way that could be more significant. And maybe we need to be aware of the resources that they that they need. And also thinking about poverty levels as well, so this really, that section is really there as a as an opportunity to begin that conversation about resiliency and sustainability. And then thinking in the future about some of the action strategies that we might begin to study to address them. In terms of housing in neighborhoods, we really didn't do anything substantial within, and really, you know, changes to housing other than noting again, like we did in 2015, to support and encourage the preservation of existing neighborhoods and housing. One thing that we is that we did do new this this time is to create an idea of neighborhoods. That's always something that we've heard people really enjoy and love about living in Lathir Village is their neighbors. And I think the challenge for the city of Lathir Village has has been over the years. Those physical barriers of Southfield Road and six ninety six. And how do we have people in the southwest part of the city feel like they are just as much part of the city as folks in the northeast part of the city are? Certainly, we've talked about that when we talked about complete streets and transportation in the past. But this idea of the neighborhood unit I think can be explored in the future in terms of giving people that resource and strengthening the network of folks at the very, very local, hyper-local level, if you will. And so thinking about what folks in those neighborhoods need. And then helping them advocate for those needs with the city as well as having the city be able to reach out to folks in the neighborhoods and make sure that they're reaching everybody with maybe the resources that are available or or other communications that need to be to be made. I think that's a really important component of this plan. We talked about the commercial corridor and the downtown plan again. Just kind of refining the concept of talking again about the village center and refining the that concept a little bit. I think smoothing out or making a more of a gradual transition here where I think the model that was in the 2015 plan was maybe bigger and bulkier, this one scales things back and provides some more town home-like or attached single-family dwellings in this part that would run behind the village center area. And some precedent images that show what that might look like, so very residential, low scale in in their design. We included three redevelopment sites. One is a vacant space here on Southfield Road between Margate and Rainbow and what a redevelopment might look like. We do this to see, not only to give property owners some ideas about what the city would envision there, but also for us to know if we are creating a vision for something that we need, then need to make some changes to the zoning ordinance to allow. We would do that, we 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 don't necessarily need to do that. The second one was the House in the Woods property. This is something that planning commission discussed a few times, the idea of of allowing more smaller homes in this little area to give additional housing opportunities for and smaller units, things that might be more manageable, it might be more suitable for older members of the community who want to stay here, but maybe don't want to live in a house with a yard. And other opportunities of that nature. And then the third is the Annie Lathir School, which we have discussed and discussed again, but we we think that is important. It's an important anchor for the village center area, and so that is here again with some refinements, as I noted earlier. We did move transportation and complete streets into its own chapter, that was a change suggested by the county as well, just to really make it stand on its own. That is, as we talked about, the division of the community with Southfield Road and six ninety six, very important. And I think continued advocacy on behalf or by the city with the road agencies, with a road commission for Oakland County, with the with M dot continues to be important and critical. As well, conversations with SMART to improve some of the bus stops in the city, and those have already begun. We have a couple of those pictured here, and I think it's worth noting that that we have had some conversations and those are moving forward, so that's something that we hope to see improved. Um, I love this, I took this picture recently when I was at city hall, the garden being tended, and that's a wonderful thing about your community. The implementation chapter, we have the zoning plan, which really takes the future land use categories of the map and shows how they're aligned with our zoning districts, so the future land use text and the future land use map is the vision for what we want to see in the future. But the zoning districts are the legal framework by which development is regulated. We've grouped the implementation items by the goal. And then underneath that goal, we have zoning action items, so those will be things that the planning commission will want to talk about. Advocacy items, those might be things like we have listed here, develop a resource kit to help homeowners find resources for ongoing maintenance. Assist neighborhoods with a framework for building associations that can enhance engagement and support needs of residents. So those are things that planning commission doesn't necessarily do, but their advocacy within the community. Community capital improvement, as planning commission is aware, planning commission's been preparing the six-year capital improvement plan. These would be items that would be, as this is one of your resource documents to repair that plan. Highlighting those here makes it easy to remember those as we move forward. And then other action items that might be either a planning commission or at city council level, and so that goes through for each one of those goals. The appendix includes those resources from the county as well as the the market study. So with that, stop that, share. And answer any questions that you might have about that. And then you can open up for public hearing.
Well, my comment is that I think we've done a lot of work on this over the last more than a year. And it's really nice to see it all kind of come together. I think personally, sometimes I kind of lose sight of, you know, we're talking about specific topics during our meetings, that they actually are end up being discussions that feed into the comprehensive plan, they're not intended only to just stand alone. An example is the resiliency discussion, which we had in our last session, which ended up being coming part of the comprehensive plan, right? So I think the document is a testament to the considerations that we're making and that based on ever-changing information, right? Two, two, three months ago, we weren't necessarily thinking about flooding. Right, now we are, and it was already here in the comprehensive plan, it's something that we be considering. So great work by everybody involved and especially, you know, thanks to Giffords Webster team for helping to pull it all together, make it nice for us to read.
If I could chime in for a second, I'm not sure, I think with this being only my second meeting and I really would have wanted to do a deeper dive on that document, the master plan, I think Suzie, you sent that to me previously or?
I, yes, you should have gotten that in a big old file dump that I sent to you and Robin when he first came on board, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was, I I I thought so, it was quite a bit, so probably just midway into that.
It's, it's, it is a large document and there's a lot of information that goes into it. Do you Stephen sorting through what's stayed the same, what has changed? It it, one of the things, points I'd like to make is that it is a live document, not that we're continuously focusing on it for the purpose of making the change, but those changes do come incrementally and things that are in there are, you know, there to be improved upon where we see fit. And that's our ongoing goal.
Thank you.
And I would note for you, Mr. Hicks, that the the future land use map did not change from last time.
Cheryl.
Chairman, if I could offer a brief comment, I just want to applaud the planning commission to for going forward with a comprehensive plan. Because it is comprehensive in incorporating the downtown development plan, the sustainability plan, the recreation plan, the transportation plan, the complete streets, as well as the sustainability plan, because it is comprehensive and bringing bringing together all those component parts. So that we are looking at all elements of the community and bringing together how we can move forward as a community. And not as just isolated parts and silos. And I think it helps us to be far more collaborative as we are having these conversations in a more coordinated and collaborative conversations moving forward. So it's very exciting to see how how our future is going to be more collaborative in these conversations. And one of the things I find very interesting is especially in light of the the historic the history of Lathir, in particular, the demographics of of Lathir. And looking at the the history from which it it emanated. And to see that it's a majority minority city. And I think it is truly unique in that it has what sixty three point eight percent black population, and I do believe that is probably extremely unique in not only Oakland County and Michigan, I would even venture to say in the nation, in having a black population with high income, high education and high housing value. And I don't know if anyone's ever looked at that, but I think that stands out as being extremely, extremely unique. And something that we really need to take great pride in and even to expand upon in how we market our community. But I want to thank Jill and all of our staff and the commission for putting together an excellent document and the platform from which we can do future planning and implementation for our community.
I think that was very well stated, Cheryl. Okay, we can open this up for public comments?
I guess it's not as interesting as the cannabis.
I was trying to decide here whether the last question in the question and answer was part of the previous or not.
Yeah. Oh, we got a hand raised.
Yes, it's me again, hi Jill. Great document, but this is what I get for working while I'm trying to listen. You mentioned a survey, what survey was that?
There was a consumer spending survey that was done as part of the as part of the market study. And there was also some survey questions that were associated with the virtual open house that we did.
Okay.
Yes, here.
Okay, thanks.
Give it a minute here just to see if there are any other, you know, there was a lot of information that Jill had gone through, and so if you had your question, you forgot your question.
Because I talked too long, I'm sorry. I also could point out that earlier in the process, we did update the city's recreation plan. That we were able to do pre-COVID, and we did have an open house, I think it was like in December of 2019. And we did do a community survey associated with the recreation plan as well.
Right.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I may, while we're looking for questions.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I I just wanted to sort of echo the sentiment of all the commissioners that have spoken so far, and I do did want to point out, Jill especially, I appreciate that market study that you had listed, that we have listed in the comprehensive plan, and I just wanted to note that as I read the comprehensive master plan, I did look at it through the eyes of, you know, a post-pandemic environment. And I think we address a lot of things that people do have concerns about now that we are living through a pandemic and we are at home more, we work remotely. You know, your community becomes that much more important because you're now sort of in the thick of things when you are stuck at home and can't go anywhere, so I I do appreciate the the comprehensive master plan, I think it's very well put together, I think it addresses a lot of items that that were necessary, especially given the size of Lathir Village. And again, my focus was more from a post-pandemic sort of viewpoint, and it it's great in that regard. And and I would encourage all residents to really take a hard look at that and think about those things. Again, now that we are living through a pandemic, what is important in your community as it relates to the master plan? So just wanted to make that comment.
And and Robin, I'll echo that, that the 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 community feedback is very worthwhile. If if there's anything that I necessarily would, you know, feel like there's any weaknesses, it's in references to surveys and our numbers that we're basing commentary on being on the lower side. It would be great to see those numbers increase to I I they they tend to to focus on, you know, what's happening in the immediacy and and that needs to happen, but also the long-term, big picture. So that we get a good balance of what the issues are and that we're looking forward, not just not to say that the 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 immediacy is, and certainly we've had our share of immediate things to think about differently than we have in the past. But yes, community participation. But yes, community participation and comments are, help, help fuel what become priorities as we make modifications to the master plan.
Right. And that was one of the things that we, I think, talked about as Planning Commission with the idea of the neighborhoods and really recognizing that, you know, sometimes it's hard to get people to think, you know, in the abstract and the long-term about things. Because we tend to, it's kind of, I think, human nature, and I think it's reinforced with our current media situation where we have, you know, infrequent local publications. We're getting a lot of our news through social outlets that tend to be very, very local and sometimes hyper-local. But how do we use that for outreach and education and dialogue rather than a platform for things when they're immediate, you know, to your point? Can we be doing that in a more long-term and proactive way? And I think that takes time to do that and to build that system. But I think you, the city has a long history of having those tight-knit neighborhoods and community structures. So I think that'll be interesting to see how that works in the future.
Okay. Well, we're not seeing any further comments or hands raised. See here. Just making sure here on all these outlets. So we'll close the, the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. And if there's any further discussion, I think we've pretty much had our discussion here. Unless, you know, not to slight anybody, if there's anything else anybody has to say about the comprehensive plan. Otherwise, we will move on to come forth with a recommendation for resolution of adoption if one, somebody wants to make a motion.
Make a motion to adopt the comprehensive plan?
I can.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Dilet Rousseau.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Aye.
Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Chairman Petofsky.
Aye.
And Secretary Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So move on to the next item on the agenda, which is just old business and tabled items. We don't have any tabled items right now. Is there any old business or any items there that anybody? If not, we'll move it right into matters of, other matters for discussion. Are there any issues that commish, commissioners want to bring through to the rest of the commission or?
Yeah. So there are the two items that are on the agenda there, which kind of came out of our.
Oh, yeah, see them there.
Planning Commission meetings. So the first one is the building materials study group. So during our last meeting, we added less, along with Mark and myself, to the study group that we established to look into building materials, updating the building material, zoning, zoning language and our zoning ordinance. And we haven't met yet, but we probably should make a, a time to meet.
Yes, concur. I've thought about it on numerous occasions and thinking, oh, we got to get that set.
Yeah. So I wonder if we can use this opportunity when the three of us are here on, on this meeting to actually pick a date to meet.
Okay, start with, I guess, the day of the week or an evening of the week, if that happens to be the best.
Tuesdays are always fun. When we're not in planning commission meetings.
Yeah, if that, that would work for me. I'm kind of moving out of my other summer activities that keep me busy on Tuesdays, except for vacation, which is coming up in the immediacy. So, so I could probably do that in the later part of August.
Sure. So maybe August 24th, that's the Tuesday after our next planning commission meeting.
Off the close to my wife's birthday.
Oh, dear.
Is that gonna get you in trouble, Les?
No, we'll plan for it. We'll see. I'll let you know if I won't be here.
Okay.
Okay. So let's plan at the same time, seven o'clock on August 24th. And I didn't want to let you know that I've heard from at least two different residents asking me what's going on with the study group. So people are interested to start hearing what, what comes out of the work that we are doing in the study group once we start meeting.
Okay.
And, and Chair, I will leave that as a standing item for you three. So, you know, if you have updates that you want to give, you can do so. And if you don't, you don't. So.
Well, we can coordinate and get those to you so that we get them as part of possible discussion.
I would certainly appreciate that.
Very good.
So the other item on the agenda for other matters is the block party discussion. So for folks who either worked during, present in our last meeting or or forgotten, we were talking about as part of the conversation around resiliency in the city and, and connectedness of the city of trying to find ways to kind of build neighborhood captains inside of each of the five quadrants in the city, five quadrants as defined in the, the neighborhood map that Jill highlighted during her presentation of the comprehensive plan. And one idea that was thrown forward was doing some sort of like a block party or like a food truck rally or even like a mini summer stroll with music in each of the five neighborhoods to try and encourage people to come out and start having conversations about how can we better organize each part of the community. So I don't think we've made any movement on this since the last Planning Commission meeting. But I'm glad it's to see it that it's here, here still on the agenda. Because I think it's something that we should try to get some momentum behind before, you know, it gets into winter.
And I do have, if I may, I do have a small, a small update. So at the last meeting, I, you all, you all had discussed or tossed out the idea of having something in July to, you know, kind of strike while the iron's hot type of deal. And that didn't happen because that was not enough time to put together a good event. So actually in talking with our fabulous police clerk, Teresa, she had mentioned that the police are doing a, they've got a community policing event. I want to say it's September 24th. I confirm that all for you. But so the, the DDA is partnering with, with the police on that community policing day. And that'll be for, for one quadrant over there on that site. So, and quite frankly, for anybody else that wants to join us. So if you're interested in, in helping, helping us coordinate it all, how, how that may look, shoot me an email, please. Corey and I are going to be working on that. And then we've started looking at some other days in the fall, in September and into October, where we may be able to have, have a block party. I don't know if food trucks are going to work out super well, since we've kind of been unsuccessful with them, with the concerts and other events this year. So but that's kind of the general framework. We've started to look at some possible locations where we can close off streets, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where I'm at with that.
Good to know. Lathrop Village Summer Stroll is going to happen on August 15th, and I think that that will be a good opportunity to start advertising this concept of these neighborhood groups and block parties and see if we can't drum up some support from residents that live in each of the quadrants to at least be part of organizing the first one in their neighborhood.
Perfect. You said it's the 15th of August?
August 15th. I don't know the exact time. Usually it's from like 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
All right. Well, then you and I will definitely connect, Jason, so we can make sure we have all sorts of good information out there for, for that event. So.
Great. Excellent. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. And that's, that's all I have for the block party.
Thank you. I'm here on mute, Mark.
I just, thank you, Suzie. And I think you already stepped into the general communications.
Oh, yes. And since somebody brought up, somebody brought up the gas station. I'm not sure if they're still in the, in the audience or not. I know it has been extremely slow going. I know that they were having some issues with their, their financing. It seems to be resolved. They've been working diligently on the actual store, on the interior of the store and some exterior features. I'm working on the, on the facade and whatnot. I did have to send them a sort of nasty gram a couple of weeks ago and to let them know that I was ready to take their bond and secure their site if they weren't going to do it themselves. And that seems to have worked. And so I now get regular weekly updates from the general contractor who comes into the office. So they're moving forward. They're waiting to get their soil erosion permit from the Water Resource Commission. And I, I'm expecting, I'm hoping he comes in on Friday, actually, and chose me his permit. So we're, we're moving, we're moving forward. It's somewhat slower, slower than we really wanted, but but it's moving. So also along those same lines, we also had some conversation. There's been concerns about the Lathrop Village apartments over there on 11 Mile and completing their site work, including the screen wall between their property and the adjacent Southfield properties. So I actually spoke to the property owner today. They're going to be working on that here probably in the next week or so. Construction on those final two buildings is delayed until spring of next year, unfortunately. The cost of building materials is too high and it's just compounded with the labor shortages. So they're going to delay it. They're still planning to do it, but it is delayed for this time being. So.
Suzie, we should. I was going to say, we should probably check the status on the approval of the site plan. I know we had to grant them an extension before, and it's probably due again. Well, consideration is due again. Yes.
They did, and I don't have, I'm still without power. I can't look it up on the computer for you. They, they did get, we did, we were able to administratively renew their permit or renew their approval. I want to say it was back in like September, October. They, so they're, they're still good for a little bit, but because they were, they'd been under construction. So I'll look into it when I get back into the office and and we'll let you know if we need to take action soon. Anyone else have any other questions?
Any? Any legal updates or updates from our planners, Jill?
You've heard enough for me today.
Yeah, I figured you probably figure you've, you're, you're talked out. You had a lot to.
We don't, we don't have any update for you guys tonight. I think I'll say Jill probably talked enough for me, too.
I talked enough, I guess, maybe.
For, for those of.
Hopefully not too much, but.
For those of us in Lathrop, we made it through the thunderstorm and hail. Don't know if it touched those of you who are outside of the village calling in. All right, let's, we have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Roll call. All those in favor? No roll call? I think we're all good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye. Good night.